Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order contrary to what the clock says at six o'clock. Okay, so could we have a roll call order, please?
Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Povenkorn?
Here.
And Mayor Davies is absent tonight, thank you.
Okay, we'd like you to stand, please, for our invocation. Melissa Fair will be doing it tonight. Her husband Gerald could not be here, so she's a good substitute. There you go.
Yes. Thank you first of all to go ahead and even invite every couple to Hachapi to pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you God, and Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this time here, Lord, and God, we just, I thank you, Lord, for our city council, for the fact that we even still rise and gather and pray. And Lord, I just pray that you would go ahead and bless our city council. Go ahead and give them the wisdom to go ahead and make the right choices for our wonderful city. And I pray, God, that you would bless each and every one of them, look after them and protect them and their families. God, I just praise your blessings over to Hachapi that they would continue. Our city continues to grow and strive and do well, and I just thank you for that and pray that that would continue. God, I thank you for all of the amazing businesses here in Hachapi that continue to go ahead and come in and provide jobs for all of us people here in Hachapi. And it's just, it's wonderful to go ahead and see the growth that there is and the continued growth. And Lord, I just pray for each and every one of the business owners, that you would go ahead and be with them and help them to go ahead and make the right decisions along the lines as well. I thank you, God, for our hospital and the staff members and the people who work there tirelessly. And Lord, they just do an amazing job of looking after all of us, and I just, we're so thankful to go ahead and have our amazing hospital. God, we thank you for our schools, for the staff members, the teachers. God, they do an endless, endless wonderful job, and we just truly thank you for that. I gladly thank you and pray, please, go ahead and protect and bless our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders. Look after them, keep them safe, keep them protected, guide them in the ways that they need to go ahead and go, and just look after them and their families each and every day. And God, again, I just pray that they would go ahead and give our city council the wisdom that they need to make the right decisions, the right choices, and just to continue to go ahead and bless our wonderful city. We just thank you and praise you and love you in Jesus' name.
Amen. Do you want to just stay there, Melissa, so we can have a moment of silence for Olivia Trujillo, the Arvin mayor who passed away? Okay, thank you, Melissa, and thank you. Tell Gerald we hope he's safe. Pledge allegiance, let Jeanette lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like to have the city clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. With the resignation of Councilmember Susan Wiggins on January 25th, the council opted to publish for the position as an appointment. Ms. Wiggins' term was set to expire following the certification of the November 2026 election, but as the vacancy occurred in the first half of the term and more than 130 days from the next general municipal election, the appointed resident will only serve until the certification of the November 2024 election. So it will still hold an election in November for the remainder of the term. So in response to the publication, the city clerk's office received one application from Hannah Chung, a city resident and registered voter within District 5. She is here tonight, so Hannah, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, if you have anything to say or if you have any questions for her.
We're just delighted that you're with us.
Thank you.
She's very knowledgeable, she's had a lot of experience with city council, and we got really lucky.
Anyone have questions for her? If not, we can open nominations.
Would you open nominations, please?
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to open nominations for the position for councilman.
Are you nominating?
Yeah, we need to nominate.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't clear what you meant.
Sorry.
I apologize.
Well, just asked.
Okay.
I make a motion that we select Hannah Chung to fill up the vacancy.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for that nomination. Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Povenkorn?
Yes.
Congratulations. We will now do the oath for Hannah Chung, the swearing-in, and we'll take a brief recess afterwards to seat Ms. Chung.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, and then I'm just going to read this and then just say I do afterwards.
I, Hannah Chung, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to injure.
You got a picture?
No, just me.
Okay, if we could invite the council to come forward so we can get a photo of the new council, please. Let's angle you this way, we'll have her lying in the background.
Welcome, Hannah.
Tell us where you want us to.
Right here along this line. There's a line? Yeah, this, my imaginary line that I'm waiting. Please come this way.
Yes.
And then we're going to face Maya, so keep coming. Jeanette, can you come this way a little bit?
Perpendicular, perpendicular to the line he just drew.
I go this way?
You move without me, no way.
Okay, now come in just a little bit closer.
We've never done this before.
Let me take for these places.
I know. We're done, right?
We want to come around this way.
Take my purse.
Hannah, so they want you to come around this way.
Yeah, I'm going to take my purse.
Congratulations and welcome back.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, can we have the police chief's report?
Sure.
Again, thank you, Hannah, for taking over this position. Her experience will be really appreciated.
Thank you for the opportunity, and it's my honor to be able to serve the city that I reside and I love. So.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. Ms. Chung, welcome.
Oh, thank you so much.
Tonight, I'm going to have a few things going here, so I'm going to kind of monopolize the meeting just a little bit because the police department's had a lot of great things go on in the last couple of months, and I think it's only a perfect opportunity to do it here in front of council that we get to promote two new lieutenants, and we get to recognize an employee of the quarter, and we also get to square in a new officer who just recently graduated from the academy. So I'm going to go ahead and begin. Lieutenant Dunn? So Jason gave me a bio, and I'm going to touch on it just a little bit, but there's a little bit more to mine and Jason's relationship than the bio. When I got here to Tatchee as the chief, he had been the acting lieutenant, and he did a fantastic job. He kind of had his feet put to the fire really quickly. He rose to the occasion, he made my transition very smooth. From the time I got here to the time my family has moved here, Jason's been basically attached to my hip the whole time, guiding me, keeping me in the direction that I need to go, and letting me know things that I wouldn't have known had I not had his wealth of knowledge here with me the whole time. So I got to recognize him a few months ago with a, with a thank you word, and now I have the honor of promoting him to his next rank, the police lieutenant, and I see nothing but great things for Jason. So with that being said, Jason, you know, has been here for 17-plus years, graduated from Rio Honda Police Academy. He's been a patrol officer, and he also worked narcotics, and that's where Jason and I share a lot of experience and a lot of grit in this profession is that we both worked at high-level narcotics unit in Kern County. For anybody that has ever had the opportunity to do that, very few of us ever do in our career, and it's something we'll always hold dear because we know a lot of the same people and worked a lot of similar areas in the county. And it's really a testament, if you can make it through that and then continue your career, it only benefits you and the people that you supervise later on. And Jason and I also shared that we were both sergeants, you know, for about eight years, and if you can be a sergeant for eight years, at that point, there's not much more at that level that you haven't learned, so it's only a natural progression to now step into the administrative role. And I'm just excited to see what Jason's going to do in the future, and I'm getting ready to promote him. But first, I know he's going to have a family member put on his badge, and do you want to introduce your family?
My wife.
Yeah. So, oh, you can pull him up here too. So she is going to pin on Jason's badge, which is well-earned, is well-deserved, and maybe a little long overdue, but I'm just glad that I'm the one that's able to do it, Jason. So I'm going to give this to you, and try not to stab him, I need him to work tomorrow.
Ow!
Girls, come up here.
And thank you, Jason, your expertise will be greatly appreciated as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, I'm going to introduce Lieutenant Justin Rupert. Justin, can you come up here quick? So I'm going to read a little bit about Justin's bio, and then I'll get into my experiences with Justin as well. He's got 17 years of law enforcement, started with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, which in and of itself, us being a little bit smaller county and community, brings a wealth of knowledge. He spent the bulk of his time in Lancaster Station, which is not too far from Kern County, so there's a lot of overlap and a lot of sharing of information, cases, criminals, all those different things that law enforcement experience on a daily basis here in this area of California. One thing Justin did do, and probably took a little bit too long to get to Tatchee PDs, he actually relocated to this area and has been living in Bear Valley since 2020, and he's been with the Tatchee PDs since 2022. One of the things that makes me extremely excited and happy to promote Justin Rupert is he has some outstanding administrative skills. And basically, he and Lieutenant Dunham are yin and yang to me because I like to move at 150 miles an hour and get things done and start moving the agency forward, and they both are on either side of me telling me when, you know, when it may be okay to proceed and when we might want to slow down a little bit. And Justin is really good at taking a look at the training aspects with me and the budget and other things that we really need to take care of as, as being a fiscally responsible police agency and putting people out in the streets to fight crime and keep this community safe. And I tell you, I couldn't be more excited, Justin, to promote you. Thank you, and thank you for all you've done and all your hard work. And who do you want to put the badge on you? Come on up. Did you accidentally stab him? He's still got a couple days. Well, no, you got a crack tomorrow, no? You didn't accidentally stick him either. So you want to go ahead and do the honors?
Oh!
You know what, it's fine.
No, no, go ahead.
This is what we're doing. Let's get.
Come on up, sir.
Yeah, bring up your whole family.
So my dad actually retired from Lill County. 33 years in law enforcement, so.
Three, two, one.
Thanks.
Jason, can you bring, bring up your entire family, everyone you'd like to get a shot?
This is only a few of us, by the way.
Can I get closer? All right, three, two, one.
So council, this is part of the reorg that you helped approve for me with Measure H funds a few months ago, and we'll be doing this again hopefully real soon with a couple of sergeants and some more hires. So next, I want to take a little break into promotions and hirings, and I want to recognize an outstanding employee. For those of you that know, our code enforcement program is, I think, second to none, and I think with the city's mission, I think we do a great job in keeping the city of Tatchee a wonderful place to live, and I think we do a great job keeping our commercial corridor pristine and inviting for citizens coming in and out of town, and I think that we'll continue to do that. And for those of you that know our code enforcement officer, Anthony Benelli, who also know he is a Level 2 Reserve Police Officer. So not only does he do our code enfor, ah, excuse me, our code enforcement, he also works as a reserve doing transports of prisoners. He fills in at the athletic events, he fills in at parades. And now I've even thrown another task on him. Actually, I'm not going to take credit for that, it's Lieutenant Rupert that came up with that idea of having Anthony start doing our backgrounds, and he's done an outstanding job. So a lot of the new employees you're going to see hired over the next few months are backgrounds done by him while he's doing all of these other things. So as the command staff, myself and the two lieutenants and the sergeants, we wanted to start recognizing outstanding work of our employees at least once a quarter rather than just trying to wait one time a year to do that. So we got together and, over the last couple of meetings we've had, and we selected Anthony Benelli as our Employee of the Quarter beginning 2024. So I'm going to read Anthony's certificate here. Do you want to come on up? And I know you're telling me that this, I don't want to call me Anthony. So my right-hand guy. At the last department supervisor meeting, Code Enforcement Officer Anthony Benelli, you were selected as the police department's Employee of the Quarter for the period of January through March 2024. It is always a pleasure to be able to recognize an employee for their contributions to the department and the community. You started your career with the Tatchee Police Department in July 2018 as a part-time code enforcement officer. In June 2019, you became a full-time code enforcement officer and Level 2 Police Reserve Officer for the Tatchee Police Department. Officer Benelli, you are described as one of the most proactive, hardest-working officers of the Tatchee Police Department. In fact, the argument could be made that you are one of the hardest-working employees for the city of Tatchee. You regularly go above and beyond your code enforcement duties, which in this community can be quite demanding, given the desire by our community to ensure the city stays in a pristine condition. Additionally, you regularly perform duties as a Level 2 Reserve Police Officer. You assist with all aspects of patrol, transportation of prisoners, school events, and much more. Lastly, you are the department's background investigator and have been instrumental in the hiring of several employees. All in all, you take your workload and duties in stride, and you always complete your tasks effectively and ahead of schedule. You never complain and often volunteer to take on additional projects or tasks. You possess a vast amount of knowledge and are always quick to share your knowledge to mentor newer officers and citizens in all aspects of code enforcement. Congratulations, Tony. It is your commitment, strong sense of duty, and willingness to help others that makes you one of the great employees within our department, and you are well-respected by your peers. Everyone is proud of you, and it is an honor to recognize you for your accomplishments. Thank you again, and keep up the good work.
Christian, where are you at? Come on up.
I don't think Chief has enough sleeves in his shirt for all his right-hand man.
Hey, I'm telling you what, I'm blessed to come and work here every day. And do you see this talented group of individuals back there? Thank you. Come on up. This is Christian Laverne. The two lieutenants back there got together before I got hired here and decided to make an attempt to send cadets to the academy as a way to kind of bridge the gap in some of the recruiting issues that we, we had had along with everybody else. And Christian spent six hard months down at the Kern County Sheriff's Academy, but prior to that, he worked every day here doing odds and ends and different tasks while studying and learning how to be a police officer before he went to the academy. So it's, it's been a nine- or 10-month ordeal to get Christian to this level, and I tell you what, we couldn't be happier or more excited for the future for him with our department. So with that being said, I'm going to let the city clerk, go ahead and step up here, administer your oath, and then you can let me know who's going to push that up.
Okay, raise your right hand, and I'll read this, and then I'll just say I do.
I, Christian Laverne, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duty upon what I'm about to injure.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
My girlfriend, Maddie.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Just stand here, let's get a photo.
Three, two, one.
Officer Laverne, if you have anything. Yes, sir. Stacy, would you like to take a picture with us, too? And Ryan? We could do another one, just me and you. Are we going to be in the middle?
All right, three, two, one. Good job, kids.
Glad you came.
Three, two, one.
Let me get one with him, and then this is your guy's project. I can't take credit for this, this was your guy's success.
All right, three, two, one.
Would you like to get the rest of the department to jump forward?
Come on up.
All department, sworn in exilien. All right, squeeze in nice and tight. Come on, keep coming. Can we double stack anyone? Right here? Eyes right here?
Thank you, everybody.
I would like to sincerely thank all of our police officers for their service. It is greatly appreciated. My husband was in law enforcement some 18 years ago. Things are definitely different with AI and drugs and so on and so forth, so it is not an easy job. And the attitude of our society now, again, with law enforcement, needs to improve because it's a very, very, very demanding and tedious job. So we really, really appreciate everything you do and support you and continue your good service to our, our area. We really, really appreciate it, Chief. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Item six?
Item six is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one or more motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. Do we have any comments from the audience? Counsel?
Motion to approve consent, that's presented.
Second?
Councilmember Chung?
Yes. Hi.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Povenkorn?
Yes.
4-0 vote, motion carried.
We have audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Do I have any public comment?
Mayor Protem, we do have Nancy Chafalo, who'd like to make a comment.
Hello, all of you. You know, a couple, our, these one up here have said, oh, what a wonderful city Tatchee is, and I totally agree. I live in Bear Valley Springs, but come down here, obviously, all the time. And when we first moved in, we went into the Rite Aid, I think it was like the first week, and someone said, hi! And I looked around, oh, good talk. And I looked around, oh, they're talking to me. So you have a beautiful town, and all I hear are positive comments. And if I get through this without crying, it'll be a miracle. About a month ago, you guys donated $13,500 to the Honor of Flight program. We thought it was gonna be $1,500, but after listening to the folks that spoke, you upped it to $13,500. And when Steve Miles, who has been so responsible for getting a bucket load of money donated to the Honor Flight, posted that in our Bear Valley posts, I was blown away. I just couldn't believe it. And so I asked him, I said, you know, is there an address I can write to? Because I was just very impressed. And he said, well, just come on down. So that's why I'm here. I don't consider myself a military family, though when I look back on my family, they are. My mom was Navy, my dad was Army. My three brothers, one was Air Force Navy. My other brother did four tours in Vietnam, which actually saved him because he needed that structure. My cousin was commander of a submarine, and my other cousin... What's his name? On one of the fighter jets down at El Centro, he dove off a aircraft carrier and never made it off the water. Anyway, so I guess I am military, but I just love our veterans. They're my idols, they're my heroes, and I read about what they went through. And it just breaks my heart. And I'm so happy that somebody initiated the Honor Flight for Kern County. They started in 2012 with 20 vets on the first Honor Flight, and it's continued and grown since then. I got online, there's a beautiful half-hour video. If you look up Honor Flight Kern County, it's on there, and it takes you through the entire experience of veterans on the Honor Flight, and they are treated like royalty, as they should be. Some of the comments, I looked at the testimonials, one veteran said, it was an honor to be asked to lay the wreath of the unknown soldier. There was another one that said, the way I was treated made me feel like I won the war. And a veteran from Vietnam War said, it was so nice to be treated this way and not the way I came home. Anyway, war is hell. And there was a newspaper article written for the Honor Flight, and it said, a journey to healing, and that's what the Honor Flight does. And I'm just so thankful to this city that went beyond and donated so much money. You'll be sending five veterans and six chaperones to the next Honor Flight. And I just love you all, and I appreciate all that you've done for the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've been on the Honor Flight, and it's a very moving and wonderful experience for anybody that can go on, they should. And you're right, that veterans are honored the way they should have been honored years ago.
Mayor Proton, we also have Steve Miles who'd like to speak.
Good evening. What some of you may not know about me, Staff Sergeant, United States Marine Corps, 1971, 1977. I do the fundraising up here in Tatchee for Honor Flight. I've been doing it for 10 years now, and the council graciously donated $13,500, and it was presented at our Veterans Breakfast last month. And I wanted to publicly thank each and every one of you and let you know that I have received so many comments on Facebook for what you did, and it's just wonderful. You have already pushed me over last year's numbers, and last year I raised just a little over $24,000 in Little Tatchee. And my fundraiser is right after a cancer fundraiser, which is very, very well-received up here also. The city of Tatchee and the greater Tatchee area is about the most giving that I can think of. So my personal thanks goes out to all of you, and just to let you know that you've had an impact outside the city limits. And come to my fundraiser, June 14th, Flag Day, at Triassic Vineyards. Put it in your calendars. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard efforts. It's wonderful that we have someone that can lead that up. Thank you. Okay, we have the finance directors' reports, please.
First, we have RSI, Oaks, to begin with.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I need an emotion. Is there any comments from the audience regarding the item 11, RSI petroleum dispersments? Counsel?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented. Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, voting for.
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Item 12 will be deferred until next meeting in two weeks. Then we have the Developmental Service Director's Report, please.
Good evening, councilmembers, I'm filling in for Jay Zell. Sick, our first item is the program supplement agreement for the active transportation grant on Valley and Mill Projects, $3.2 million grant-funded project. The program supplement agreements, we have a master agreement with Caltrans. Occasionally, grant projects require additional language or something else, so it's a sister contract next to those umbrella contracts, master agreement with Caltrans. This is the first one of the series for preliminary engineering for $65,000, so we would recommend you adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and execute a program supplement agreement. Yeah, that allows us to do this grant.
Do I have any comments from the audience? Counsel? I'm just glad that it's getting done. Only, I want it tomorrow. I've been waiting for that for a long time, so I'm glad to see it's.
What are the segments along Mill? Is that gonna be mostly sidewalk?
So, we can cover both, the north side of Valley from about Oakwood to Mill. We'll do curb, gutter, and sidewalk on that, and then Mill from Valley north to Tatchee Boulevard, and it should be infill on both sides of the street.
Okay, 'cause I thought that was all completed.
Not completely.
Yeah, we're doing infill on either side to complete them. One of the things that's changed with ADAs, that sidewalk behind the curb ramps, so that's a big portion of it.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll add all that.
Valley is new, nonexistent at this point, and Mill is infill.
This is a great project, both of them.
Okay, with that said, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All second.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, voting for.
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And then the city engineers report. There you go, you don't have to go sit down yet.
Exactly right. So this is a public improvement notice of completion for Track 6216, Base 4A. That's the Cape Hovanian track, the 55 lots that are complete. Not only are the houses complete, but what we're certifying is complete, is the public improvements, the streets, the sidewalks, the water, the sewer, the monuments. So we have six items that were contractually obligated by Cape Hovanian in 2021 to complete. They're there, laid out for you. And I'm here as city engineer to say that all of them are complete. So we would ask that you approve the notice of completion for Track 6216, the Cape Hovanian communities, public improvements, and direct staff to report the same.
Do I have any comments from the audience? Counsel?
I don't think so.
I'm just glad to see it.
They came in and picked up the ball where someone else had their development had dissolved, or they couldn't complete it. So we called the bonds to complete the road and the other infrastructure to get it... That's why we have insurance or bonds on these projects.
Yep, we are carrying another one-year guarantee on there, 55 lots as well.
Great.
And I'm assuming throughout the project, when they're creating the infrastructure, you're there to check to make sure it's done.
Yep, we got full-time inspectors that are there watching to make sure everything's done pretty fine.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Super.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, voting for.
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Okay, Chief, here we are up again.
What I'm up here to ask you about tonight is the approval to purchase police units. As everybody knows, our fleet is aging, so we need to purchase new police units in order to keep up the safety and efficiency on the roadway while at the same time keeping down our maintenance costs. So we were recently advised by Jim Burke Ford of Bakersfield that the three police Explorer units that were ordered back in 2021 are now ready to be purchased. It's taken that long, and if we don't take advantage of them, we will be bumped out till the end of 2025. And so in addition to that, we were able to secure two additional Ford F-150 pickup trucks from Phil Long in Denver, Colorado, as our local vendors continue to struggle to keep up with the demand of everybody now that is wanting to buy commercial-type vehicles. And one of the advantages of Phil Long and why we're able to get a couple of vehicles from them is they are a premier dealer, and they cover three states. So California is now becoming one of their markets. So we're able to get vehicles from them because they may have 200 or 300 on the lot to sell where our local vendors may only have 20. And so that's kind of what we're looking at. But anyway, the fiscal impact for purchasing the three Ford Explorers from Jim Burke with all equipment is $249,886.52. The fiscal impact of the two Ford F-150s from Phil Long with an estimated equipment outfit is $162,000. These funds are going to be factored into our mid-year budget adjustment, and with a portion of the funds will come from the police department budget as well as Measure S funds. And a copy of the quotes were attached for counsel to the agenda item, and so I'm requesting that you give me the approval to move forward with the purchase of those vehicles.
Do I have any comments from the audience? Counsel?
About how long do you have for a life expectancy on most of our vehicles?
We're giving about 100,000 miles out of them. So my estimate would be 10 years. I would like to see us be able to keep them 10 years. Yeah, the fleet staff here, the public work staff does a fantastic job in keeping those vehicles up and running, so I think that's well reasonable.
Super.
Better make a motion. They disappear.
I know. Can I get a motion, please?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, voting for.
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried. It only took two years.
Okay, city council reports are at this point, the city manager reports, please.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, voting for. I'm very proud of all of our employees in the city of Tatchee, but especially proud of Chief Stanbridge and his department this evening. As you can tell, things are moving along nicely. The city of Tatchee supports Tatchee Police Department. We support the men and women that protect and serve our city and beyond, and I just wanted to say thank you, Chief, for his leadership, and congratulations to the individuals that were promoted and patrol or officer of our net was proud of. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember reports, Jeanette.
Not much to report, a reminder that this Thursday is Coffee with the Mayor, but it was nice to see Tony get an award today for code enforcement. Code enforcement plays a huge role on economic impact in our community. It makes people feel comfortable when they come to a beautifully clean, maintained city that just doesn't happen. It's a lot of people working together. And I know when I was at the Chamber of Commerce, Tony was a huge help to me personally at the chamber, helping me with projects and giving me advice. So it's nice to see because code enforcement is tremendously important for the community.
Bill?
Question, Chief. What's our total staffing now for your police number of officers and sworn and unsworn?
It's changed since we're doing promotions. We're gonna be, I think, 15 right now we're at? We've got one in background, one inquiring code enforcement officer in background. We're doing dispatch interviews this week, and we have a young man, and I think one of our dispatchers we will be sending to the academy in July. So we are moving forward quite well, and I tell you what, I'm excited. I couldn't be more happy with promotions and the folks that we have ready to step into leadership roles.
So do you have room in this building for your expansion?
We do. I think this building easily will be fine.
We have so much room, we're building pickleball courts.
I was gonna say, we're not gonna jeopardize the pickleball courts, right?
Remember, we designed and built the facility for 20-plus years.
We're well within... I mean, we could do some furniture configurations here and there, and we're good.
Yeah, that's excellent. So, goodness, thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Well, and he took away my little sunshine on my council members' report with the pickleball courts. Those are coming along just beautifully. I'm just waiting for them to be striped and get moving and grooving. There's a ditch, and I was kind of concerned. I thought, oh, I can see what's gonna happen with that, so hopefully they'll get that smoothed out.
It's probably the court they're gonna make me play on, because with my skills, they're trying to seek advancement.
You get to with key there. You get to with key. And then also, the five-on-five soccer and park on Valley Boulevard is coming along just great. I'm excited, I can't wait till it's finished. And I don't think I see too many potholes anymore, except for out of the city, so that's my big thing, pothole. Anyway, okay, Hannah?
I'm just very happy to be here and getting involved with the city business again, and it's so interesting to see Agenda on the other side, so.
We're very fortunate to have Ms. Chung.
Yes, we are.
Join your group as a colleague, and we look forward to working with Hannah and all of you as you move forward. Very progressive. Mr. Baj, we didn't mention the walking group. Would you like to maybe brief the council and the audience on the walking groups that start this Thursday?
So Thursday at 11 o'clock at Centennial Plaza, we'll be having our first walking group, and it's very nice that we're able to bring TVRPD onboard, working in collaboration. And we're inviting the community to come out, and if council would like to join, it's an opportunity, just like Coffee with the Mayor, we found another way to connect with our community and allow members of our community to come, ask questions of city staff, council, and get a chance to walk downtown, see some of our local businesses. We timed it because all the businesses downtown are open, so that way if someone wants to cut off the walk and head into one of our boutiques, they can do that, and then we'll grab a lunch over at Kelsey's following the walk. But it'll be about a two-mile walk through downtown.
Thank you. And then I know several council members will be joining me Saturday night at the Chamber of Commerce Gala and recognition for the Citizen of the Year, small, large, and medium business, is that right?
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, I messed it up, I'm sorry. Yeah, but it's a great celebration, and we look forward to joining the chamber members on Saturday night.
Okay, with that said, we can adjourn the meeting and go to closed session.